Um, we opened, we recorded a couple of times. All right. So first up, we have examination of meeting minutes from October eighth, which we have in the red signed folder.
August eight, August eight.
August eight, August eight. So, uh. Motion to approve meeting minutes, uh, as written from August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second? No, I will, I'm sorry, Mary corrected me last week. I'm supposed to say I will entertain a motion. Cause I'm not supposed to make motions. Apparently, I'm not supposed to make motions.
I move to accept them. August eight.
So the motion is made by TJ. I will second that movement. All in favor? So I can still say the wording and everything, but then.
Oh, it's true. But I never said anything because I don't like being first.
All right, um, audience participation, seeing none. Uh, highway, come on down. How are you? Not bad. Good week. A little heavy rain there for a few minutes.
Yeah, it was raining a little while ago. I mean, you can tell the northeast northern trees are just about done up there.
We're. I haven't been outside, that's why I was asking. I know they were working, but so they're.
We, we, we get time, figure it out there, you'll see.
I've been up as far as Gore Road, so I.
Oh, you've seen most of it.
Well, if you go on around.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's great. It's really nice. When we go with that, um, or the farm, it should be coming down here and doing six pines.
Oh, cool. I thought that was not happening. Good. I'm glad to hear it. Nice, uh, near the white church on this side of the road.
Across from the historic.
So they're gonna take them now.
Six of them.
I tried twelve. I got six.
You gotta start high, yeah.
Was it this much?
Uh, then I, then I went around with another gentleman, looked at other people's town. I didn't have all day, but there was a few up on, um. Birch Hill. Uh, one right at the, at the Y. There's a big old ham block right there. It's white. That's gonna be coming down. Went a little farther on the left hand side, moving down.
Cross from Hayden there, or that one I.
And then a little farther, um, another tree is gonna come down.
Right on the, yeah.
And then the wrong corner, there's a, there's two of them on Hayden Road. Two or three, and there's another two big ones over on Crooks that are like inches away from the tall ones.
Okay.
So that, that would be coming down in the very near future.
What do, what do they charge for taking a tree?
Taking it?
Yeah, taking it down and getting rid of it.
Uh, it's these thirty inches of, of the anorae is worth roughly three thousand dollars. They're ancient.
Yes.
No, I was just thinking about the big pine by the entrance to the cemetery. Let's get in a beer.
Oh.
That's getting to be a half of.
Um, I, I looked at another company right now. I had to ask the same company.
Yeah.
Norwood Tree, and they belong to Franklin County did. Um. I'm waiting for a price right now. Come back from, I want them to do some, uh, kind of work, adjust your line from the top. And he said, I said, I need to, I need to wait. He said, oh yeah, that should get my pass for coming up on the right. And come back down within a week. Depending on how heavy I want or how light I want. Sure. Um, if you're looking at the number, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
I appreciate it, yeah. Uh, northeast paving is coming Tuesday to do some work on Russell State of China.
Great.
Finish up the role. Did you do that? There they go.
Okay.
Uh, Northland would have been done or started today, but due to the road being wet, we couldn't, we couldn't do it.
Okay.
Uh, we do have the equipment here, stolen stock filed in the art. Just waiting for the work to dry up. It was great when I went home and it started raining.
Yeah.
Um, this Friday. Um, we have a backup. Last week, we had a, um, the Hensley Show. It happens every year. Well, it hasn't happened in two years, but it happened this year. Anyway, uh, Bobo had a, uh, oil distributor there, and this, everybody enjoyed it there and, uh, pretty cool. So we sent it out to Monterey. Through the highway department, so they can hold on to it for you to check it out. See what it's like. Um, I'm having it come this Friday. And it'll be here all last week. We'll even use it and demo it and we can do whatever. Um, I wish everybody would come on this thing and look at it.
Okay. Elevator.
Real, real elevator.
Thank you.
Um, a lot more or towns are looking for this kind of vehicle, these equipment, uh, very universal. Instead of you don't, you don't have to put it on a trailer. You don't have to have so many, in a truck with a trailer to haul it. Um, you can jump in and go. Uh, it comes with a variety of attachments. Of course, there are these different prices, but, um. You, you buy one thing, if you buy an excavator that's a good size, you know, you're just paying for half of it already. Go the other way. Um, become, you can also get a mower with it, over rail on the edge and all that stuff. Uh, steel wrist, which needs. You take the box, spend a three sixty.
Okay.
Um. I went to Williamsburg one day and they have a real desk there there. It's so one fifty, that thing's huge. And they also have. Four guys working there. They do everything in town, do the waters, they do all that. And he said, it's very nice to sit there with that in front of a fire hydrant and not have to move the excavator around. And you sit there and be all the way around it without moving nothing. That's it. Oh, okay. So, um, that'll be here this Friday. I'm gonna buy it, move it down nearby if I'm buying.
Okay.
Because, you know, down to show you, you can only see it for a few minutes and you can't really operate it. So you're the opportunity.
Where are you gonna have it? At the highway garage?
I invited for now and then move it to probably the, um, sort of, there's more room, but depending on how this week comes along the road. But yeah, it's.
Did you get all the gates raised?
No, not yet. I'm trying, I'm trying to work with the farmer to do it.
Yeah, I know you mentioned it last time and I just was curious.
These, things that she has, may have one or two companies going.
So you can't start black time with the loads are done, can you?
You, you can.
Oh, and then you can't hammer, okay. I just want to make sure. Usually they don't do it that way, but.
Well.
I know.
It's a, it wasn't in the project, you know, so.
Got you.
But it will be done. And you do not.
Any ideas on when the, um.
No, it's not because I haven't told them yet.
Okay. Just.
Here's how I think about it. All right. I, I just, you down a red letter and off I go and.
Yeah.
So, yes. If anything, maybe I can't tell you.
Okay, that's fine. When it does happen, Mary, do you think we should put something in the paper just so that like families and kids know just when that gets paved? Um, that there'll be a spot for outdoor basketball rack and riding scooters and roller blades and all that stuff?
Do you have any idea when it's gonna happen?
Not sure yet, but when it does.
May, April or May, probably.
I'd love to advertise. So it'll be kind of a big deal for.
Yeah, you're, you're hands full, I know.
If you, if you could choose, no.
Absolutely, okay.
That would be more appropriate than to just throw it out there and say it's gonna happen and then waiting and waiting.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, no, I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right.
Be a good picture too.
Yeah.
I won't be in it, but it'll be good.
We'll get some kids out there for you. Yeah. I feel like I could take them.
No, you couldn't.
Yeah, I could definitely beat this guy.
If you couldn't, you should.
I could beat him. Great. You can follow. Okay. Oh, not that I can think of.
Anything TJ?
Okay.
I'm thinking.
And we all were like, we all had something to say about it. It's on the tip of everyone's.
I was just, I didn't say it. I just.
Way too easy. All right.
Yeah, it's not raining.
No, don't say that anymore. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. All right. Busy down there tonight. What's going on? We know when. Ah, I'm taking permits. Yes, oh, I see. All right, um, town administrator.
Yeah, uh, so first of all, is, uh, budget and finance. Uh, so we had our monthly finance team meeting la- uh, last week. Uh, so FY twenty-two should be closed out.
Wow.
According to Janes, so, uh, we should be all set on that front.
Okay.
Talking with Scanlon about an audit, um, when that would, that process would kick off. But I think we talked about doing it, uh, at some point starting this fall, so.
Okay. Did we get that letter, letter yet that we're closed and?
Yeah, one of the letters.
Okay, I'm just curious. It's always exciting. Okay, okay.
Uh, in terms of the finance committee, um, we did not have an inquiry on last week.
Wow.
Um. Continues to be a challenge.
I know.
I, you know, I've, I've reached out to a few people.
Yeah.
Our potential finance candidates haven't gotten any fights yet. Um, I don't know. What would think about changing the makeup of the committee. Right now it's five members in our bylaws.
Yeah.
I totally close three. I know you don't like bylaw changes, but.
Only at the ATM, please.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
So anyway, that's where we stand unfortunately. That's out of town now, so.
Yeah.
Probably have to reschedule for October.
Okay.
Take care of a few lamps that they have.
Yeah.
Yeah. So continues to be strong.
We gotta somehow sweeten the deal.
Oh, that's another thing we could do.
Yeah.
By law change because right now, uh, you know, we can't actually compensate them anyway.
Yeah.
Can't serve on any other committees or.
Sure. It's gonna be some sort of incentive.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's where we stand with that. Um, grant updates. So the base data better together grants, uh, here Paul, this was basically, um, something Josh got for, uh. Getting devices to seniors, uh, doing some training. Um, so we are just finalizing the details of the purchase of devices. Uh, we're looking basically getting everyone Chromebooks. So they'll be relatively cheap. Um, and then we are also, I mean, contracting with Mike, the tech guy.
Nice.
Um, he's, he put together a design for training for seniors.
Great.
Uh, it'll be something he'll record. It's gonna cover, uh, telehealth, basic kind of computer basics, Google things, you know, Word docs.
Awesome.
So that should be, that should be good.
And then it'll go on the website if there are people to use as a resource later, okay?
I think what we probably recommend because many people have mentioned this. You know, it's a challenge when you do these strategies because everyone's at a different level and just seeing something up on the screen, you know, you might not be ready for it. So we love for it to be a resource for, you know, younger members of people's families, help them out.
Sure, that's a good idea, yeah. Great.
So, yeah, it should be out there soon.
Nice.
Open space and rec plan finalization. Uh, so I spoke with PBDC about this. Uh, did meet up the, the list of tasks that remain finalized that document. Um, I don't expect them to be finished with their part until January, but that's fine because the main reason to get this done is so we can apply for what are called park grants. Um, so, and that funding schedule doesn't come around until spring.
Okay.
Continue moving forward on that. Uh, local hazmat mitigation plan. Uh, this is another one that, um. We, we had it, we have a plan in place. It's from twenty sixteen, so it's now expired.
Yeah.
Um. Again, just useful because it allows us to apply for different grants with FEMA and other emergency management organizations. Um, I'm gonna check with the chief about what level of priority that is, uh, because they do make you go through an entire process with a bunch of public meetings, et cetera. Um. And I'm not sure if we're even, at the end of it, we'd even be eligible for a lot of funding opportunities that there are out there, so. I gotta talk to him about it, uh, but we do need to, if we are interested in pursuing it, we're gonna need to put together a letter of interest.
Okay.
But again, that can be pushed off until the end of this fall, so. Just keeping you informed. And then on the shared HR study, um, spoke with PBDC about some of the vendors that are out there. Um, you know, one interesting thing is that our contract with Mass Union Bank is coming to an end, uh, the end of this fiscal year. Um, and part of their skill before is kind of HR, so they do our payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Um. In a whole cleanup of our HR records, et cetera. Um, so it, it would be interesting to see if that can be kind of that work that they do can be broken out.
Mm-hmm.
And then that cost shared with a whole bunch of towns.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, so we'll see if that's actually viable.
Okay.
Then we'll work on that. Then other departments, um, I think I mentioned they, they interviewed a candidate, uh, last week for the administrative assistant position. Uh, I haven't gotten a chance to speak with a officer about whether or not they connected with the second applicant.
Okay.
Um, but so we should have somebody in that position by the end of the week. Uh, and then, um, a bigger item here, so the, the police. Uh, so I forwarded on a draft of some amendments to the shared service agreement with Chester. Um, I'm happy to run through any of those if you want to discuss. Uh, I did also connect with Don Homison, the new town administrator, uh, over in Chester. Um, so he, he's, he's still, uh, figuring out some others and things.
Okay. He, when did he start?
He started three weeks ago.
Okay.
But you have, I think some issues to access, file.
Okay.
You know, so it's, it's gonna take a minute for him to get my speed there.
So what are, um, some of the changes in the inter municipal unit that we shift from there?
Yeah, so I, I'd say, um, well, so we've already got a number of them. Um, the big one I think is, uh, you know, with what these other towns that have these arrangements have been doing is leasing, uh, the, the substation to the host community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that is. Yeah. From the Collin Center, that's the preferred way to do it.
Okay.
Is what I've heard. Um. However, I, you know, that we don't currently have that arrangement, so it's something we can discuss. Um, I included a draft lease in there. The basic idea is. We lease to them for a dollar. Uh, we would ensure the actual space, they ensure all the equipment. Uh, other than I think some things that are actually ours, like the, the computers, I believe, are actually.
Belong to the town, okay.
Uh, but I have to check on that. Uh, and then that, you know, it would just be, it would expire at the end of the actual agreement with.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the shared police services. So that's one big item.
Okay.
Another one is, Mary's phrase.
There anything in there about the vault?
There is, yeah.
Oh, good, Mary.
I don't have a section in front of me. Um.
Cinder, I read it.
Basically. So I said the vault is not included in the lease.
Okay.
But of course, we can't access it without going through.
We need, we need their permission.
Yeah. And then so it basically is made things in status quo where, you know. Anyone who needs access, they can talk to me or the chief and.
Continued process, the way that it is.
So.
I know, but we, we should be able to go in there anytime we want.
But here's the other thing is that there are, so we've run into this problem, problem in the past is that sometimes there's, um, paperwork in that office that is, um.
Personal or.
Yeah, so the police records. So there is a communication that is working really well as to just letting them know that we have to go in there, going in there. And that way there's, I don't wanna see anything.
So what, what is, what do they need insured, the equipment?
Yeah.
So if it hasn't been insured all this time and it's been working, we're okay, and now we gotta change it?
Well, so. I'd have to take a look at what's on their schedules and stuff. I don't know how much that equipment that's in that office.
Is theirs or ours? What we bought paid for, or did we give it to them?
What equipment? You're talking about equipment in the police office?
The finger scanner for the pistol permits, all that. Is that our stuff or is it?
That might have been something we had before.
We did, we had it.
Yeah.
I know we did. So that's why I'm saying, now they're gonna take care of all of our stuff. I, I just don't buy that. I'm sorry, that's just.
No, he was saying that we're gonna lease the space and not.
No, I know what he said. I just don't like somebody leasing part of our building. That's all, like my personal opinion.
Yeah. So. I, I mean, it's tough, right? We didn't, we have this existing agreement that that basically says they're the host community, they want to have all the equipment, um, insured, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then we're not necessarily looking up at that because we have a vehicle that's, we still have a title to, we have that space. Um, so I'm just looking for ways.
So it's insured now under our policy, is that not correct?
It is, yeah.
What's?
There's supposed to be handling all of that.
Mm-hmm.
All of that administrative.
So it would save us to not insure it, or we'd still be?
You have to notice the difference.
It's in our bill.
Yeah.
So I would assume that it would be covered by our insurance.
That's what I was.
But if we're leasing it out.
We're leasing it out, then, then they have to show us proof of insurance.
Correct. Which, I mean, I, so I, my understanding of what Chris is trying to do is just tie up some loose ends that we didn't think of when we.
Yeah.
When we entered into the agreement. So, you know, ninety-five percent of the agreement is working well.
Hmm.
It's just that we, now we're realizing, oh, this is something we need to.
No, it's just something that Chester is aware of that.
I believe so, yeah.
So when I spoke with Don this afternoon, I mentioned.
Yeah.
The, the lease agreement. Uh, and I mean, the other piece of that is just signaling to Chester that we're still committed to this agreement because we're also proposing some other amendments to the agreement. And I don't wanna.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
Make it look like we're trying to blow it up.
Now, from my perspective, we're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, now the, the proves are that we own. Are they using it now?
But will the police probably use it?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
They're, they're using it and they're, they want titled. Is there a worth to it? I mean, how old is the vehicle and what's it worth?
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, iron out those details.
I don't think it has twenty thousand miles on it. Is that the one she had that the chief had before?
I'm not sure. So you're saying that they want the title? I don't know if that's the case.
Yes.
Is that correct? That Chester wants the title to that vehicle?
They want ownership.
No.
No, it's just that in the agreement.
Yeah. So I just don't, I don't wanna, I just don't wanna twist anything so that we hear something wrong.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
I don't wanna.
So Chester's not asking for the title. Chris is just saying the way that it's set up isn't exactly coherent with the.
Well, yeah, it's right in the agreement, then we have another.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, I understand that a little bit.
Um, I mean, I personally. Ha- don't have a problem with the lease as long as we've run through our lawyers and it, I mean, if that's part of what we have to do to have it work the way it's supposed to work.
Yeah, and I mean, town council said this and stuff, yeah, totally standard lease.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm happy, I'm supposed to have a call with Collin Center at some point this weekend. I'm happy to check in with them about it and say it's really makes sense for us given our setup.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then, uh, the other one in there is the, uh, revolving fund, um, so because they get, uh, the proceeds from police detail. Um, they put it over revolving fund that they use to pray the costs of, uh, vehicle maintenance, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we just, I think. I just had town council put together some language, just clarifying that, okay, that's an offset to our total assessment. It's not, it's not like Chester gets suspended on.
Exactly, yeah.
Stuff, but we still end up paying for.
Yeah.
Half of it, yeah, yeah.
So that should, I don't anticipate a problem with that. And then the other thing is the rotation of vehicles through departments. Um, it's not clear to me to what extent that has been happening in Chester or, or what. Um, that's something I need to discuss with Don. Uh, but we did include an amendment saying.
Cause doesn't it say they have total responsibility when they wanna buy them, when you're in on it, period? They have the last say. That's what the contract says.
They, the, the agreement is that they, we're, we have an advisory role on all this.
Advisory, but that's not the bottom line.
No, but we've always had, I mean, we have a good relationship.
Yeah. We went into this in a very, like, if this was the, the discussion between Chester and Blan- Blanford the entire time was very much like, we wanna make sure that we're, you know. Doing everything equally and no one's taking advantage. We gave Chester that, um, that, that role, um, because it was, it made sense, um, at the time. So I don't, there's no animosity anywhere. I think that, are we meeting together, the two select boards soon so that we can talk about these two things?
Okay. Originally, I was looking at earlier in October to hold that meeting. I think we'll push it a little bit.
Okay.
Time. Um, and at that meeting, we'll also get the financial report for the quarter from the police chief.
Okay.
And then Chester is really supposed to do an annual report on the state of the department. Um, and that's supposed to be due October first.
Okay.
Also gonna push that a little.
A little bit.
Because, you know, there's been a lot of turnover still.
I just wanna make sure as we continue to move forward and select boards continue to change, that the relationship doesn't get, you know, altered to where people are thinking. You know, that there's anyone taking advantage. So that certainly wasn't the, the motive going into it, so.
I, I mean, I think the main, uh, thing we wanna accomplish is just actually reconvening the system that's laid out there. We're supposed to be meeting quarterly and checking in on things and that just, you know, when.
Yeah.
Fortunately, you believe and then that doesn't happen and so.
Yeah.
We just wanna reestablish that.
Okay.
But take a look at those. Let me know if you have any questions or comments.
I had mine already.
Yes. And we've got some time to, to make any adjustments. Um, and then we'll, the idea would be to kind of sign off and the board on position on any of them. Chester will do the same. And then at that first quarterly meeting, we can.
Ask you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's something.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on from the police, um, water department. Uh, so this is the other thing discussed with Don. Uh, I guess he was at the most recent, uh, shares, water operator meeting on Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we have, uh, pretty much a finalized description of that position. Um, right now, Chester actually, they hired somebody as a water operative, operator for the interim.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, but they're still committed to moving forward with that agreement, um, and having shared primary and secondary water operators.
Um. Okay.
And now, uh, and Ira from PBDC is looking at, you know, what kind of, uh, regional efficiency brands are out there that we could use. Oh, got a question.
Why are we moving forward with this when our water department commissioner and the water department superintendent have made it clear that they have no interest? In combining forces with Chester because they're twenty years behind the time.
Yeah, they have, they don't have any interest in, for example, merging the two.
Right.
But, but there is still a potential cost savings when it comes to actually that one, one water operator position.
The license that we need to check the plant and do all the testing. So instead of hi- trying to us to hire one, we split it. And it'd be better for us, I think, is what he's saying.
What Gordon, what Gordon's always been concerned about is taking on all of the capital.
Yes.
Issues that they have to deal with. But we're, you know, someday maybe Chester will be in a place where we feel we could do that and combine forces, but for the moment, we're just looking at the operator.
And it's my understanding too that the water operator is supposed to be available twenty-four seven.
Yeah, they have.
Has to be on site seven days a week or five. There's some unusual configuration of the schedule.
Yeah, and, and so a- as I understand it, then why you have a primary and secondary to ensure you always have.
I think it's like, it's something like three hours a day, someone goes to the plant. Um, it's a small amount of time, but then in case of emergencies, there has to be someone available.
Yeah. There's a reason it's difficult to find people to fill these positions because it's.
And there's licenses that are difficult.
Serious, yeah, serious licensing requirements, uh, available.
And training and all the computer stuff.
Right. Um, the other water issue that's being discussed, um, so I don't, I. I don't know how much background people have on SCA projects. And I'm trying not to speak Greek here. It's, it's very technical sounding, but basically, uh, the system that we use to monitor our levels of water in the clear well. Uh, and make sure everything's working appropriately. Um, that was something that the town kicked in some money to, to help improve, uh, last year.
Yeah.
Um, since then, right, Pierce, the consultants on the project have gone through and identified that were further upgrades that they believe should be made to the plant. Um, yeah. We, so on Thursday, we had a call with them and they kind of went through their whole list of suggested.
So expensive.
It's extremely expensive, yeah. Um, so.
Now recommended or required?
Well, so this is.
Highly recommended.
This is, this is something we'd have to talk to, to Gordon and Brad about, uh, because. You know, a lot of it seemed to make a lot of sense, but again, I think we went into that project saying, we kind of just want the bare minimum to meet this, the requirements from BEP. And now it's kind of evolving.
So like, at what point, this, I, I always get to this point, at what point is the water department not self-sustainable? Right? Like, I mean, at what point? The two hundred and thirty-seven houses on Town Water. Does it make sense? For us, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I wanna get rid of Town Water, but it's just like, how do you afford it?
Yeah.
And what are you gonna do for those people?
Right?
Right, strictly their enterprise fund. Not everyone should be paying for it.[1786.04]
Yeah, yes. It's it's a continuing, yeah.
I always said there should be a fire charge. We're using my water to put the fire out at your house because I'm paying for it, you're not.
Yeah, we always take into account.
And I'm not being, I'm sorry, and it and minimal, so that we'd have some money to build towards some of that stuff. You know.
That in the past was actually, uh, legal, we couldn't.
They do it other places.
No, we did, we did research and it wasn't, we were not able to charge a fire emergency water, um.
So we'll have a fire district and then they can do it. Uh, fire district one, they have no lines, no hydrants, okay, you're charged.
How how much, how much money does the water Spartan have in their various accounts?
In their capital projects account, for example?
Three nineteen.
Yeah, 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 I can, I mean, I can look it up right now. I will say that whenever I.
Not enough to do with any.
Yeah, whenever I. Whenever I wake us up with Gordon, he said, oh, that's already spoken for.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they just have so many.
Now, how many of these improvements are required by the state? All of them?
Well, so this is what we're talking about. The Skater project is supposed to address the T D violations.
Right.
And it was supposed to be bare bones.
Mm-hmm.
Town still ended up kicking in, I think, a hundred twenty thousand. And now what we're being asked for, for the total, the order is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if you do choose not to do it, you end up worse later because, you know, situation has gotten more, you know.
And in the plant itself. The the copper tubing and stuff that they run out of the filters.
Yeah.
It's pinholes.
Yeah.
And it was the thickest you can buy for copper tubing. So they're probably need twenty or thirty thousand dollars for the repairs and they're alone. And and I'm just, you know, looking at it, knowing.
Well, why can't they use plastic? That's what I don't understand.
I don't know if they can.
That is what I'm considering as tangent questions.
Really?
Uh, yes, because we can't answer that question. That's like, let's just, you know.
No, I I I probably, I would.
That's something you should write down here and ask the board.
For anyone who's interested in the details, I'm happy to forward right here since presentation and you can see line by line what they.
No, I don't wanna scroll.
That sounds exciting.
Observing this over the last number of years, that department has been neglected so badly.
Now.
And so what you were talking about, no forward thinking at all, years and years and years and years.
No.
So for me, it's pleasant to hear them saying, this is bad, we have to fix it, this is bad, we have to fix it. I know it's a money thing, but.
Yeah.
Everything in this town is money.
I agree, yeah.
I absolutely, the only problem is is that. Now. I ha- I have my own wealth. Anything goes wrong with it, it's on me. Okay? I, that's, that's the deal, but what bothers me is, is that all this neglect now. Where my tax dollars go to the town, I mean. Two hundred and so many houses are taking advantage of that tax dollar when I can see that money going to other projects that we need to get done.
Here's another, here's.
Twice and see how it goes for you.
Well. Here, here's another thing.
That people don't deserve clean water because.
No, I'm not saying that. I I'm not saying, I'm just, I I think that, you know. We, we as a, as a township, we gotta accept responsibilities for what we got, but I don't think it's fair. That, when I have my water tested, I'm putting the bill, when you have your water tested. We put it, we put the bills down.
Monthly bill either, so.
Quarterly. But here's one for you, TJ.
Yeah.
You use the town highway department, all the houses on twenty-three and North La- North Street don't use it, I'm paying for that too, no difference.
All, all.
Way, what?
The highway department does all, all the buildings and my taxes is supposed to pay that.
I know, I'm saying, I don't get any usage out of the highway, my my road is done by the state, so what's the difference?
Yeah.
We we all gotta pay what we gotta pay, it's that. But I am, and I don't disagree with you, but.
We, we usually love it in government.
Yeah.
Water, it's an enterprise fund, so we try not to.
Yep.
But yeah, it's a challenge. I will just say, uh, really quick, so this is something that we'll be looking at in our capital. Plan as well, so I'm including any of water, waters requests in that, so.
Okay.
Figure it out, call center.
Okay.
And then to end on a positive note, uh, so another item from that call, uh, that, um. Martha Clark at Gateway Regional has been working with students who are interested in, you know, water operation as a career.
Oh, cool.
Um, so she's got, uh, handful of students who are kind of on that track. Um, actually, I believe on Thursday, uh, I can't remember definitely you're gonna be there, well, the the filtration.
No, I don't, I was still at West Hampton one with a selectman we were going to talk to.
Oh, okay. Well, so anyway, I I believe on Thursday, they're gonna be cleaning some of the filters and.
Right.
I did talk about that.
Yeah.
Yes. You're supposed to let me know and I. So it's Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, and I can get you some.
Please, and don't email me anything because Debbie's gone, I don't know how to open it, just text me.
You just admitted that in open meeting and it's recorded.
I don't know how, I don't have a user.
Some of the students visiting the the filtration.
That's really great, I'm excited about that. Maybe Blanford can, or Gateway can move in direction of a, uh, another vote license.
Yeah.
Knows that we need it.
Are there any grants out there for clean water?
Yeah, well, so, the the thing they're looking at to pay for these skate upgrades is the clean water staple ball and fun.
Yeah.
But it's not enough, so.
Yeah, never is. I said, I used to tell my boss that every time he gave me a raise, that's not enough.
This looks like good news.
Yeah.
Ongoing project update number one.
Yes, so town commons, um, so, uh, there's an interesting funding source out there.
Okay.
And I talked to G T A, I was telling them about it, um, so it's called, uh. You know, script and reconnecting. America, or something like that. Basic idea is removing or altering roads that have divided communities. Or community assets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so this is potentially, at least for the. Reconvigeration of North Lambert Road, or that project, a way to fund the planning of it.
Awesome.
Um, so it's would be between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so that could get us at least some of the way there, um. They're waiting to hear back from Astor about the the proposal.
Okay.
So we're still just waiting here, uh, on that front, but anyways, I'm glad we at least have some potential way of funding.
Great.
So question on that, you wanna close that rope? Which I think is the most assinide thing I've ever heard.
We know.
But what happens if they don't wanna change the highway road? You're gonna make everybody go through there when they're working? That's pretty stupid, isn't it? This, that my opinion, because if that doesn't fly and the taxpayers say no, that highway road isn't going anywhere, and you're gonna block that off?
We're just doing what, be recommending for safety wise for that road.
I know, it's such a dangerous road, they might have had an accident there in the last hundred years.
Need to make. We need to make some changes. Look at how, we've only been working together for a few months and I can already tell when you're gonna jump in with something.
Jeff, you're being predictable.
I used to have blavocas every year. No, it's all right.
He probably the hawk did. Oh, my God.
Even's gonna say. Oh, he always took his glasses off and put them on the table and then he was. Yeah, and then he would just, I would say, put those glasses back on, I mean. I could see you huffing over there.
Not yet, but you will.
Yes.
I haven't talked to one person that's even for it, not one.
Yeah, so while I reached.
Other than you outsiders.
Or my outsider.
You've been here long enough to be here originally. He's still an outsider. Outsiders, they haven't been here long enough. Oh, you've been here forty-one years?
Four.
Four years.
Forty-eight, right? Yeah. I've been here seventy, so you have nothing on us.
It just means that you're old.
Here one, uh, interdepartmental meeting, uh, it's gonna be happening on Monday.
Yes.
Um, we're gonna just hold it right before the select board meetings, we might start slightly.
Okay.
Slightly late.
No problem.
But, uh, the idea there again, because we're gonna run through what's happening at special town meeting, what's happening with capital improvement plan, what's happening with our eighty-eight transition plan. There are some tech things we need to go over and there are plenty of them, and then check in with the departments on, you know, what other things we wanna discuss, so.
Okay. And I saw you sent an agenda out for that, right? Oh, good.
Uh, beaver management policy, sorry, it seems like TJ has been doing readings, so I appreciate that. Um, that's, most of that language is from the town of Foxborough, so I don't even know. Said something about climate.
They have an old trouble with the Patriots.
Yeah, tough game.
Oh, wow. Well, how many schools do they score?
Dude, do you?
Yeah, six field goals.
Okay.
And they only made.
He doesn't care.
Exactly, my point.
Anyway, with the beaver management policy, so I got to meet with, uh, the board and health conservation commission. Uh, and the highway superintendent about what we wanna do about the beaver situation. So they're taking a look at that, uh, you know, draft policy, but basically the outlines of the policy are, uh, the conservation commission. And the highway superintendent make a map of the town, identify where the problem areas are, which ones are so bad or. You know, risk destroying parts of our infrastructure that we actually need to trap beavers.
Mm-hmm.
Then the other ones, you know, where are the areas we can just put a flow device in or have some other kind of long-term solution, and where are the areas where we need to say, ah, doesn't matter.
Okay.
The beavers as well. Um, so that's the basic outline.
Great.
Um, and then we also put in some steps for how, uh, conservation board health are supposed to coordinate when an emergency comes up.
Okay.
Um, and then the other part of it is, um, Dick Gates reached out to Springfield Water. So we're hoping they will be willing to help us out on the Blair Road situation, um, Dick thinks that. They will.
Oh, great. That's exciting.
But he he's supposed to have more updates later this week on that.
So this would be something that would go to special time meeting?
Well, so the beaver management policy would not.
Oh, okay.
It's just, that's just something we would.
Oh, that we just adopted, okay, sorry. Okay.
Anything, any kind of longer term agreement with Springfield, that might be something we wanna bring it up.
Okay.
Uh. So that's, that's where we left that. If you have any comments on the beavers, let me know.
Well, I. Right?
Now, the, didn't we enter into an agreement with Springfield Water on, don't look at me like Jeff, you're scaring the hell out of me. Uh. On on. So right away roads that they use.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we have an intergovernmental agreement with them for some of the roads that we can no longer publicly access because they're gay.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, are are, ha- has there ever been a start date? Um, when they were planning to do it, I know I heard.
Oh, have they started? Oh, uh, not, maybe Dave would know.
As far as I know, they have not started.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I was just curious, because like. We were, we went up to, uh, Jethro Jones Road today and. Mister Hall did a fantastic job on that and, uh, I was, made me wonder, but what about the other roads?
Yeah.
Springfield.
Yeah, I know, I don't think.
Yeah, okay.
But that, that agreement is kind of a model that we could work on.
Yeah.
All right, so that's beavers, uh, Belt Blur, uh, you may have seen they're having a community meeting on, uh, Thursday.
Is it here?
You know, it's just, it's virtual.
Do, okay.
We we let them do it virtually, it's really just, they're checking a box off of the state.
Okay.
So I did post it on the website and everything.
Okay.
And they're supposed to reach out to the butters, so. We should cover there, but if anyone wants to attend, that information is on the website.
Okay.
Um, Putting Hill, uh, so that's our other marijuana cultivator, um.
It's out on Birch Hill, Beach Hill?
Uh, yeah, one Julius Hall Road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right there. Oh, okay, thank you, that I know, so, I never heard of.
Shepherd Farm tomorrow. TJ.
I can't go, I gotta feel one.
Oh, really?
Yeah, one of my wife's.
Uh, well, anyway, I'm, I'm gonna be visiting Putting Hill, um, to talk to, to Tom, I think the the owner.
They're really nice.
They, as you may have seen, they sent us a letter about, uh, community impacts.
Yeah.
So this reflects the changes that the legislature made.
Yeah.
We have to document any impacts.
You know.
Uh.
They're a very small business, I I can't imagine that there's gonna be much impact.
Yeah, I don't even, I have to check. Said anything about impacts.
Yeah. I think when they had come to us, they they estimated their yearly, um, gross income at being like thirty thousand or something like that, it was like really tiny. So we had said like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yes. Well, anyway, I'm, I'm gonna still check that tomorrow.
Cool.
Um, and then highway fire garage, um, so the O P M is still updating the scope. Uh, for the design services from Western Sampson. Uh, we, I'm still supposed to meet with them, at some point, just wait until they get what we need to do for their contract and potential, um, you know. allocations from that building stabilization fund at special town meeting. Uh, and Jeff, I, I don't know, Dave, either of the Davs, any Dave.
Pick a Dave?
Ridge Avenue, but, uh, we were gonna be internally on Thursday, just without.
Of course, yeah.
And try to get on the same page about.
What time?
Uh, ten thirty.
Did this?
We already have.
Man saying, this, this is Bellefour?
We're talking about.
Oh, no, no, so the letter in there?
Yeah.
That's from Putting Hill, from another.
Oh, that's from Putting Hill, okay.
I think the winter holding is from.
Oh, yeah, oh, that, that's.
Oh, this is Bellefloor, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, there's two different letters, so.
Oh, this is for the Zoom.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's all I have at the moment.
All right. So we actually, and we're looking at establishing a liquor license fee. In the past, it's been three hundred dollars. Uh, we waived it the last two years for COVID relief to help businesses. Um, Jennifer, are you here to talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay, did you wanna come on?
Well, I just wanted to hear what your, what your thoughts and what you were doing.
Okay.
Um, I know that, and I can't thank you guys enough for, you know, the past two years.
Mm-hmm.
And you've only got two places in town that have a liquor license, we're much smaller than most of the other towns. And we're hoping that you're not gonna raise it. I mean, we've only been in business now for four months.
Yeah.
It just isn't, you know.
Yeah.
We're still trying to catch up.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I don't have any interest in raising it.[1632.88]
Is, you know, I think is high as it is.
Yeah. Um, so what do you guys think? I personally don't have any interest in wa- raising it, my thought was. Do, are we interested in, um. Waiving or reducing it for COVID?
I, I would like to waive it for one more year for down to two hundred dollars personally. And so she can get her feet back on the ground, since this is gonna be your worst time of the year, I think, Jen, you know, it's slowing down. So I think we'd like to, I'd like to give you a break down to two hundred personally, for, for this next year.
I'll second that, if you make it a.
I make it a. I make an emotion.
So, for discussion, um, my thought was to. Oh, maybe I'm just being ki- extra kind, my thought was to waive it entirely because we're looking at. Bringing in a total of six hundred dollars to the town or about four hundred, it really doesn't make much of a difference to us. But that two hundred dollars might make a big difference to businesses.
Absolutely.
So I agree with you, but I would like to waive it entirely for another year. Um, so. I would, hold on, I would entertain a motion to amend the motion. To waive the fee completely. For this year.
Calendar year.
Correct, is there a second, no, is there someone who moves my?
Okay. Second it.
All in favor of that amendment? All in favor of the amended motion? You write it, when I say I entertain it. Yeah, okay, sorry. I, uh, would entertain a motion to appoint Pat Lombardo as Blanford representative, Blanford Board of Hilltown Community and Association.
I moved the motion.
You moved it, I'll second it, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I, any unfinished business?
Maybe.
Hearing none? Uh, are we good to adjourn before seven? Six fifty?
Okay. Just, this is a quick one. Has anybody ever heard or seen from our building inspector?
Our bu- yes, he's fabulous, you know.
No, because I had, uh, somebody come to me today and asked me, for two months, they've been trying to get a permit. That wood burning stove at their house, no reply, he did it online.
Okay.
And you know, I don't know what online means.
Building, yeah, it is building inspector.
Yeah, it is, cause I talked to Dave.
Yeah.
And he said it's under the building inspector for that, but, so. Why is he not responding to these online things so these people can get going?
We should, we should chat about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And there, is there a problem with that, or? You know, is there a problem, or is he? Cause he just. Okay, okay.
Alright, we are journeying at six fifty.
Second it.
I didn't motion it.
Oh.
I entertained a motion.
Our motion now.
Everything that aside is in the random folders. Oh, wait, hold on, we're still being recorded. And we're recorded over there.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, hold on a second.